Welcome to this week's St. Clair County Board of Commissioners meeting. The types of business that occur at these meetings include public hearings, official voting on actions by the Board of Commissioners, presentations by departments of the county, and recognition of service that makes our county great. As your elected representatives, the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners is committed to improving the lives of all our residents while preparing county government to meet the demands of the future. In order to do that, we need to share our thoughts and plans with you. More importantly, we need you to share your thoughts, concerns, and opinions with us. We encourage you to come and experience the process by attending any of these meetings. They occur every first and third Thursday of the month at 6:00 PM at the St. Clair County Administration Building at 200 Grand River Avenue in Port Huron.
The meeting of the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners Human Services Committee will come to order. Let's rise for, the clerk will call the roll.
Commissioner Semasko.
Here.
Commissioner Ward. Commissioner Heidemann.
Here.
Commissioner Bone.
Here.
Commissioner Rushing.
Here.
Commissioner Greatap.
Here.
Okay, the meeting will come to order. Let's rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have on the white piece that said revised, a revised agenda.
Mr. Chair, I would move that we add an update from SEMCOG to the agenda tonight under Item Four Updates.
I think on the revised piece that's there, Mr. Heidemann.
Yeah, I think we need to make a motion.
Okay. Is there a second?
A second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carried.
I move the approval of the amended agenda.
Before we move on, we vote on that, I want to mention an item down on Item Six. I'm just mentioning this, when it comes to Item Six A, which is tabled, but I'm going to leave that there and speak to it when we get there. If I moved it off the table, I'd have to take it up right now, so I'll wait till we get down there and then I'll ask for motion to take it off the table.
Okay.
So, all those in favor of approving the updated agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carried. Okay, citizens to be heard. Are there any citizens to be heard this evening? I'll ask again, are there any citizens to be heard in the audience this evening? Hearing none, we'll move to updates on the SEMCOG update. We'll have some discussion there. Presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm Paul Tate, Executive Director of SEMCOG, and with me are Kathleen Lamaco, our Deputy Director, and Amy Mulmer, who leads our membership external group at SEMCOG. We want to thank you for the opportunity to be with you again. We want to make this, if you're willing, we'd like to make this a fairly regular occurrence that we can come out and, in a few minutes, just review on what SEMCOG's doing, particularly as it affects St. Clair County. Our region is large and comprised of 240 counties, cities, villages, townships, intermediate school districts, community colleges, which make up the SEMCOG membership. It's, we're made up of small, medium, large communities, rural, suburban, urban communities, and we know that for our region to prosper, all of our communities have to succeed. So, our work is, it's certainly important to our central cities, not just Detroit, but Port Huron, and other central cities in the region, but we want to make sure that our range of services that you pay for with your dues meet all of your needs, as well as the rest of the region. What we'd like to do, you know, this does give us an opportunity, not only to share what SEMCOG is doing with you, but also us to come out and see and hear what's going on firsthand in St. Clair County. Again, what we'd like to do is a very brief overview of some of the hot items at SEMCOG, and just to start that, I'll turn it over to Kathleen.
Thanks, Paul. Some of the current activities that we're engaged in are, there's a number of them focused on kind of intergovernmental collaboration and sharing of best practices. The financial challenges that we find ourselves in means that local governments need to look to each other to do things more efficiently, more effectively, and share kind of what they know with each other. St. Clair County participates in several of these. They participate in our information technology collaborative, which is sharing the best of IT approaches used in county government. St. Clair County also participates in our GIS Users Group, Geographic Information Systems. A number of local governments use those to keep track of information, to understand their communities better, and we found that by working together, our staff can train each other, but we can also save money when we're acquiring big pieces of data and information that we all need to do our jobs. Examples of that include working together on a routine basis to collect aerial photography, which we all need. By working together, we can get more accurate information, a greater level of detail, and we can save the administrative costs of both procuring, acquiring that data, as well as doing the quality assurance, and making it available to, not only for us, for our planning work, but also for, you know, a lot of communities make this available to their residents, to citizens, to businesses who are interested in that information. We've also recently, in that area, acquired detailed building footprint outline information that we're in the process of getting that data from a consultant that will be sharing with all of the counties, and that data is, can be used in community development and redevelopment activities, but also in identifying, do you have all the buildings that are in your county on the tax rolls? So, some of the assessors are using that data. In the area of governmental efficiency, we're providing a lot of training, we're assisting local governments with, by reviewing their budget, we're collecting benchmarking data that we can use to help identify potential cost-saving approaches, and we've also assisted in developing, developing the materials that local governments need to meet some of the requirements of the EVIP program to obtain your revenue sharing, things like providing assistance for the dashboard, the financial dashboards that communities like yours have on your website. And we also do a lot of activity in protecting water quality, and in fact, today, we brought out some information that your health department is going to use to educate the citizens on what they can do to help protect water quality. We do that as a part of maintaining our water quality management plan, and we also work on not only the planning aspects, but how do we implement those plans? And as we think about implementing better water in the region, and particularly in St. Clair County, we're working with the McComb-St. Clair Partnership, which has identified projects to seek federal funding for. Among one of our most recent successes is we've worked to find a way to continue the clean, the drinking water monitoring system. Initially, that drinking water monitoring system was paid for with federal grant money, and once the federal grants went away, we facilitated a group that came together collectively to look at how could we come up with a way to finance collecting that information so that we can make sure that no dangerous pollutants get into the drinking water system. And I think we've come up with a funding system. We've also looked at ways, before we did that, to find out how can we do that in the lowest-cost way possible, and so we think that's moving forward. We've worked with the communities with drinking water intakes, as well as with the Detroit Water and Sewerage Department, and we've been able to get them to make some commitments to help in that process.
Kathy?
Yes.
Did you say you think you've come up with a way to pay for it?
We know that DWSD has made a commitment for their part of it, and I know that, I think just within the last few days, we were getting, we were asking all the communities to make their commitments. I don't, I know that we've gotten a number of them, but, and I know that DWSD was a critical piece of it. So, we're, okay.
If I could ask, I believe there's 13 modern systems along the...
You know, I don't know the specific...
When you can.
Right.
You know, I'd be interested in, because I'm sure you've got some communities, I think Algonack's looking to get back in it.
Right.
I'm not sure if Marysville is, but, and I know Port Huron got out of it, but they might be getting back in. If they don't, you don't have 100% into it, how are you going to cover the other monitoring system? So, when you get a chance...
Okay, yeah.
We think we're, we can taste the critical mass to keep it going.
Well, then, is this just basically new information regarding the water monitoring, Kathleen?
What it is...
I mean, just lately, because there was some...
There was one that was, was a pretty high-cost system, really detailed monitoring, and, that was funded with federal grant funds. I think with the, no longer having the grant funds, what the group that we pulled together did is look at, are there more cost-effective ways that we can collect and get that monitoring information?
We've got a couple people from our health department, I know they sit on that board and probably could, if we...
We turn it over to the program.
The funding actually, yeah, the system actually was, funding expires on December 1st, so that's where we've been looking at other means to continue it long-term, and to date, the actual deadline is like this week. To date, we have commitments from Marysville, Marine City, and then the Algonack Clay Township Water Treatment Plant, and I know that Ira Township is meeting next week to vote on it, and those are the ones that I am aware of in our county today. And it extends all the way from Lake Huron all the way down to Lake Erie, it goes all the way down to the City of Monroe Water Treatment Plant.
And I think the system's, it's all connected, there's been a lot of work to figure out how we can share this information and have it operate as a system. Another area where we're engaged is developing the Long Range Transportation Plan for the region, and we're actively, in that regard, working with Scotts, which does detailed transportation planning for your county. We're particularly interested in making sure that the plan addresses the needs of your county, and so Scotts' active participation is very important in that process. And while we tend to think and talk about the Long Range Transportation Plan, what we want to make sure is that plan has a role in directing the, directing funding of projects, and we want to make sure that it provides a vehicle to get as much federal dollars into funding transportation projects in this region as possible. In that area, one of the new things that you're going to see in our transportation planning project funding is a new program called the Transportation Alternatives Program. That program is being developed pursuant to some changes in the federal law, and it's going to allow us to look and fund projects more holistically, projects that address a broader range of issues. It pulled together projects that do things like trails, and projects that do kind of downtown, you know, downtown redevelopment along a corridor, and projects that deal with sidewalks and pedestrian travel. And that project, or that program is going to begin for, in 2013, and so you'll start to hear information about that program, and I know that in your county, you've been pretty active in the whole trail development, bike trails, pedestrian trails, so that that is an opportunity to fund those activities. One of the things that we do at SEMCOG is legislative and regulatory activities, and we have been pursuing legislation at the state level to make the Clean Water, the Clean Michigan Sewer Funding available as grants rather than loans. We passed a bond proposal in the state a number of years ago to fund those types of activities, however, a lot of that money was never spent because local governments weren't in a position to borrow money. And since the voters have approved that bond proposal and those funds are available, we're working to pass a law that makes it possible for those funds to be made available on grants, so that they are going to be used for the intended purpose, which is to clean up the water. We advocated for the passage of the Federal Transportation Plan, Federal Transportation Bill called MAP 21, and right now, we're in the process of, kind of actively engaged in the regulatory process. As they develop the regulations for the new transportation bill, we want to make sure that the regulations are such that it, that it brings resources and it's amenable to a region like ours, and by that, I mean a region that's not growing, that has transportation needs that are focused more on rebuilding, rehabilitating our systems. We're also proud of, and this was a couple of years ago, but one that impacted you was the, making possible the bioreactor at your landfill. I know we worked a lot on that piece of legislation that would allow septicage to go into the landfill, and I know that you guys are testing that, or doing that as a pilot, and that appears to be a success, and I know that we've spoken with people and heard good things about that. We're in the process of developing our, in the legislative area, our 2013-2014 policy platform, as we prepare to influence the new Congress and the new state legislature. Among the issues that are on that platform are local government finance reform, things like addressing the challenges related to the Headley Amendment and the Headley and Proposal A interaction, which limits the ability to raise revenue, support for some of the community development and housing programs, state and federal transportation funding is always on our list of priorities. Where other priorities in the environmental area focus on invasive species, how do we control invasive species, can we get basin-wide control of ballast water discharge, and streamlining the environmental regulations and making sure that there's funding for the departments to administer the environmental regulation and ensure timely reviews. We're going to be establishing our legislative priorities at our General Assembly next week, and Amy's going to give you a little bit of a glimpse of that meeting as she talks about how St. Clair County can participate.
Kathleen, I'd like to make a couple comments before you bring Kathleen up there, and that is, we have been doing quite a few things here in St. Clair County, partnering not only with other counties, but I'm going to list two or three of them and just see what you think and how we're doing maybe with the other counties that you represent, or maybe we can increase, or maybe we can do better, but I just, just as you were talking, I just wrote down a few of them. Our health department accounting, we're working with the health department so that they don't have any special accounting, we're doing it here at the county, but working with them. Our payroll is done by RISA, that's which, which we're, you know, we think those kinds of things are helpful. Our Level 4 assessor does LaPierre County and St. Clair County. The Veterans Affairs, the same Veterans Affairs Director, I guess, again, with the same, sharing with the county of LaPierre. And our sheriff just added the Police Department of Algonack, so we're working with them on things like that, and so these are things that we're doing, and I just wondered if, and in fact, as I see that Kurt's here with the Road Commission, we just passed a millage to say, a small millage of a quarter of a mill to say, to help townships, and when we need, when we get grant monies from the state and feds, because some of these smaller townships, even 5% or 10% of the grant money is, they can't come up with, and so we're doing some of those things, and if you could think of other ways we could say, we'd like to hear, and I just wondered if any of those would make sense to what other counties are doing.
Absolutely, and in fact, we have a database on our website, which is where we try to capture all of these great examples, and I'm going to go back and make sure that those are on, on our website and people can be aware of them. We use that to share with other, other, other local governments, as well as, as we make the case for local government operating efficiently and effectively in Lansing, because so often we hear that, now, local government just needs to save money, local government needs to do things more efficiently, that we need to have some of this as ammunition as we do some of our legislative activity.
And it's very clear from, just the ones you mentioned, Commissioner London, that the St. Clair County is really ahead of the game. I mean, the breaking down, not only the barriers between counties, but as you indicated, I wasn't aware that the RISA is doing the payroll. Those are the kinds of things that we're all going to have to do more of if we're going to sustain the services for our taxpayers, and those are great to hear. Thank you.
Any other questions for me? If not, me.
Picking up on some of those examples a little bit, we also have a team of consultants who can come to the county and work with you on operational efficiencies, and I believe that that team is led by Dave Berger, and I believe that he's been out and has worked with the county, but that is always available at no cost to you. That team also does monthly webinars on various municipal financing topics. They focused a lot on helping communities get that EVIP funding, the replacement for revenue sharing, so that's something to watch for, and there's actually one of those sessions coming up on November 29th that I'll talk about in a minute. Wanted to just say that St. Clair County is maintaining strong participation in SEMCOG. The county has provided leadership and guidance on our Regional Housing Strategy Task Force, and also our ongoing task force that's working on redeveloping commercial and industrial corridors, and that's in addition to the ongoing participation on our Transportation Advisory Council. We regularly see your appointed alternate, Marston Murphy, and delegate Commissioner London, and we look forward to working more with you, Commissioner Rushing, and we've started a process of getting information to Commissioner Rushing so he can help ensure that St. Clair County is getting a great return on your investment in SEMCOG. Speaking of that investment, I wanted to let you know that after about five years of across-the-board cuts or freezes to SEMCOG dues, our bylaws and legal committee met earlier this year to recommend, and ended up recommending that we return to a formula-based mechanism for assessing county dues, and the result of that, in St. Clair County's case, is that your dues will increase a bit by $878 in this upcoming calendar year, so I wanted to make sure you were aware of that. Want to also remind you that all of you, all of the commissioners, all of your staff are welcome and encouraged to attend and participate in SEMCOG events. All of the events are free as a part of your membership, and we've got a few coming up. Kathleen mentioned the November 8th General Assembly, that's our full membership body. That meeting will be taking place in Warren, and the General Assembly members will be taking action on the Regional Housing Task Force's recommendations, and also on preliminary policies related to our transportation plan, in addition to providing some input on helping us prioritize the issues that the Legislative Policy Platform Task Force is getting ready to recommend shortly. In addition, we have a great keynote speaker at that meeting who will speak during dinner, and that is Mayor John Fetterman of Braddock, Pennsylvania. He has drawn international attention in trying to revitalize the very tough economy in Braddock that has experienced the changes in the steel industry. This small city is about 20 minutes from Pittsburgh. They went from a population at their height of about 20,000 to about 5,000 now, and Mayor Braddock is a really interesting person. He is a big, burly, kind of biker-looking guy with a Harvard education and a very hands-on approach to trying to revitalize that community. I would encourage you to look at a video that we have on our website that features a day in the life of this mayor. So, we're looking forward to hearing the kinds of things he's been trying to employ in Braddock, and it should be an interesting discussion. We also have two SEMCOG University workshops coming up. On November 16th, we will be in our offices, talking in more detail about that new grant, transportation grant funding program that Kathleen mentioned. It's called the Transportation Alternatives Program, and that's, again, on the 16th. On the 29th, there will be a webinar on maximizing taxable values to increase municipal revenues. That's something where you can log in and participate and listen to that webinar from wherever you happen to be, rather than having to come to our offices. And finally, just wanted to emphasize that we are in the process of the development of our 24 transportation, 2040 transportation plan, and we're seeking input and feedback on that plan from both our membership and from citizens at large. So, we would love an opportunity to come back and present either at your board or other meetings, gatherings in St. Clair County that you might be aware of, groups that might be interested in this information, and providing input. We need input on the preliminary policies, on the kinds of trade-offs that we'll be facing due to the reality that there's more need than we have resources to meet, so keep that in mind and let us know if there's an opportunity for us to come out and talk about transportation planning. And with that, if you have any questions, we'd be happy to entertain those.
Are there any questions, further questions to any of the SEMCOG this evening? Oh, we appreciate, okay, Paul?
Thank you, just closing, thank you for letting us be with you for a few minutes at least.
Appreciate the information.
And, you know, we'd like to have the opportunity to, we'll keep in touch with Bill about coming out, you know, not, not, we don't want to wear out our welcome, but if we can come out and just let you know about what we're doing, and, because St. Clair County is an important member and an important part of this region. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on the agenda, down to conceptual ideas, initiatives, excuse me, initiatives, any conceptual initiatives? Hearing none, we will go to old business, environmental, health, temporary, food, which was, I understand, was tabled, and I mentioned in the opening remarks that I'd like to offer a motion to remove from the table.
Mr. Chair, I would move that we remove from the table the environmental health temporary food fees.
Support, Mr. Heidemann? All right, the motion, the item has been removed and up for discussion.
Hello again, Steve Demick, Environmental Health Director, and I'm here tonight to discuss our proposed temporary food fee increase. As you're aware, temporary food, our inspections that are short-term duration, usually less than two weeks, at one location, and they are state-mandated that we do an inspection and license those type of events. Our current fee is $55, and we also do charge a reduced rate for nonprofit charitable organizations of $33. We are proposing to raise that fee to $92, and then also offer a reduced fee for nonprofits, that would be $52. On average, the health department conducts 250 temporary food inspections annually, and that breaks down into about 150 of them that are nonprofits and 100 that are the for-profit The cost associated with this type of inspection is that most of these inspections are after-hours or on weekends and holidays, so there's additional wages and transportation costs that we do incur. Based on the historical averages, this proposed fee would generate between $6,000 to $8,000 per year.
Correct me if I'm wrong, we tabled this last time just because some of the commissioners wanted additional information regarding some of these things, did you, were you able to get that additional question?
Well, I did talk with them, and I still don't have my questions answered.
Really?
Well, what I specifically asked for is if we're going to be raising fees, which is, to me, is like taxing the residents or businesses within the county, what is our actual cost? And if I go by your cost here, you got $100.35 per inspection, so if I just round that off to 100, you have 250 inspections, that's $25,000. If you're going on per inspection, per inspection, if you remember our...
That 100, yeah, true, okay.
And you're saying it's going to raise, increase revenues from... And you're saying it's going to raise, increase revenues from $7,000 to approximately $18,000.
Correct.
But by these figures, we're not going to cover the cost. Then I also brought up the example of down in Algonquin, we have the fish thing there. Potentially have 10 to 20 vendors, pickerel tournament, excuse me. Make it the walleye tournament.
Mr. Graytop, would you like to explain what he's talking about there?
The fish thing, go ahead.
Yeah. And, but if you're going to make 10 to 20 inspections at one location and your inspectors are going to do it all at one time, your figures get skewed there.
Absolutely.
So what I was asking to get the exact cost, because I don't want to put a cost on the residents, because that's what it ends up being.
Sure.
Because if you're in business, they got to pass that cost on. I want to know the, to the best of your ability, what's the actual cost to our employees at St. Clair County to provide this service? And it looks like, from what you're proposing, isn't going to cover the cost to do it. And I'm willing to raise the cost even more if it's, if we can justify it. Because I don't want to look at this in three years and saying, look, we're still not raising enough money. Let's get, do the homework and get the cost that the county is actually incurring to provide the service. And you should be able to get that from the employees that are paid by their wages and break it down and get us an actual, a pretty good close cost. Because this, from the figures you gave me, we're not covering the cost yet.
Yeah, right. The $100 is for one, you know, one operator. And obviously, as you have more operator events, that's going to bring that cost down. And also weekday inspections, because we can incorporate, you know, transportation and staffing more efficiently on those type of days. But the $100 is a pretty accurate number, because most events, we do not get a lot of, like, the, those larger events generally start on a weekday, Friday. So we're able to bring the staff during work hours to do those type of inspections. So the majority of our inspections are on weekends, and they're single-event type operations, where that $100 is an accurate amount for that type of inspection.
But if you can show me that the cost that the county is paying for these inspection is right near the $18,000 for the revenues, then I can support this, but I don't have the information. What was my concern before?
I can try to get you more additional information, for sure.
What would be, could you give us an example? You said, I think there was 100 of the profits, temporary. What, can you give us an example of what that would be in terms of what kind of a license that might be?
It's like the vendors that are at the Pickrel Festival, the ones that, you know, usually you get a line of them at the Blue Water, the Boat Night type festival where, you know, they are, operators are generally from out of county, come here for events, stay here for a weekend, and then move back out of county, those type of operations. As opposed to the charitable ones, you know, the church, the pancake dinner, breakfasts, and, you know, those type of operations that are generally community-based.
I know I've heard this before, but what, how long has it been? Has these existing fees been in place, do you think?
This fee actually was slightly adjusted. There was a 10% across-the-board food fee adjustment, I think, three years ago. The problem with these fees is that they were so low that it really only created $4 or $5 additional per inspection. We did a cost analysis with all the adjacent communities, the six adjacent communities, and our temporary food fee is less than half of the average charged by any other county, or the, of the average of the six other counties that we did the cost study on. So we're not even recovering, you know, half of what most other counties.
Mr. Graytop?
Steve, did, first off, I want to say thank you for the comparison to the other counties. That shows us a lot, tells us where we are. The second question I have, and I understand what Commissioner Rushing is saying, but my question to you is, do you feel that you have done the best you could to put together this program, that you are as close as you're going to get with?
Sure. It's a significant increase.
Increase?
Yeah, definitely qualified as a fair increase, increase that we're very comfortable with as far as setting. It's still a significant increase, but we don't feel that it will deter anybody from, you know, hosting events or having events.
And your cost will be close to cover?
Close to coverage. And we do get some state fundings that go to our food program. They're not specifically dictated to, you know, each individual food item that we do, but we do have some ability to recoup some of that on cost recovery. And we also do get some county appropriations, so this will help, obviously, reduce that amount.
Thank you.
I would just like to say, we do have, like, we have 120 different food cat, fee categories, that environmental health. And this one, by far, is the one that sticks out as the most below our cost.
Are there any other questions regarding the, we don't have the motion before, is there, I would ask for a motion?
There's a motion.
There's a motion?
From the table, we put the motion back on the floor.
Okay, all right. Any other questions then? Okay, the clerk will call the roll for a roll call vote?
Commissioner Samasco?
Yes.
Commissioner Heidman?
Yes.
Commissioner Bohm?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Graytop?
Yes.
Commissioner London?
Yes.
Six yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's go to the full board, right?
Right.
All right, moving on down to the new, item number seven, A, library manning table changes. We have Allison going to give us some information?
Yes, good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to talk to you about this. As you're well aware, the county has been discussing the possibility of changes in the provision of health care based upon the Affordable Health Care Act. And as part of the preparation for those possible changes, we've been asked to take a look at how it could possibly affect the staffing levels. So as part of that exercise, we identified that we would have about 14 individuals who would be impacted by this change. But as we were investigating these, these changes or these possibilities, we identified some inherent systemic inefficiencies in how the library operates. An example of this is that we have 11 facilities. Of those 11 facilities, we have four tiers. And the tier is based upon population size, facility size, collection size. And monies are divided up accordingly to help develop collections and provide services. Those four tiers have seven different operating hours available to the public. On a Monday, we open at 8:30, 9:00, 9:30, and 12:00. So it is going to, a change in the manning table will not only meet the criteria of the possible changes for the Health Care Act, but it will also allow us to economize and make service hours more available to the public. We also have found that in looking at each staffing level in each of these branches, there is not consistency across the board. There isn't consistency from one branch to another branch. We have people who are working 18 hours a week, people who are working 19 hours a week, people who are working 20 hours a week. And there's no, there's no consistent staffing level from one branch to the next. So this is an opportunity for us to create some efficiencies within the library system while meeting the potential need for the changes necessary upcoming with the Health Care Act. I do appreciate the telephone calls I received from Commissioner London and Commissioner Graytop to help to identify for me the inefficiencies in my request. I, because I've been working with these numbers now for several months, I made some assumptions, and I apologize for that. We will be essentially reducing in hours, or staff hours, about 6,500 hours a year. We need to cover those hours in order to operate the library system and provide the services that we have now. We would not be able to absorb all of those hours with the existing staff, which is why we're asking for a manning table change that would increase the number of staff so that those individuals can take on the hours that we cannot absorb.
Any questions for Allison? Representative, Commissioner Graytop?
Allison, first off, thank you for following up on my phone calls.
My pleasure.
And cleared it up for me completely. The other thing I want to do is thank Allison and the library for getting out in front of this. It's something that everybody's going to have to do with the Obamacare coming in and getting out in front of this. We still have no idea, I don't think, what the look-back period is going to be. And getting out in front of this and doing this sort of stuff now is getting us better positioned. And I applaud you and your board for doing this.
Thank you. We were, we were working on the recommendation of county HR and administration to prepare for this possible eventuality. There's so much floating right now, so much information that we don't have. But our time is starting to become short, because if there is a 12-month look-back period, January 1, 2013, would be where we need to be ready, should things progress in the way we think they may. So.
I guess the only question I would have, are we doing this a little bit too soon? Do we wait another 30 days on this to actually see what happens? We're making a lot of, I mean, I know we've been talking about it countywide, too, what it's going to impact. And the fact I would, in my mind, I would perhaps just assume to perhaps act on it when we know for sure that it's coming down the pipe. Because right now, we're talking about if-come kind of things. So that would be my only.
And I do appreciate that point of view. The library board is requiring of me a budget, and we need to have that budget. I have a board workshop on Saturday where I need to present some kind of budget. And at this point, I'm presenting several options, depending on how things work out this evening or how the Obamacare situation actually happens, so.
Allison, just so that I understand, are you, are you asking for approval, full approval then, this evening? Or we meet a week from tonight? Would that be?
We were going to ask for final approval this evening, if that is a possibility, based upon the meeting being on the 15th. The meeting's now moved to the 8th. We may be able to work with that. It still constrains us a bit. Any change within the staffing would result in some kind of working with the union in a bidding process. So that takes some time, and we were really hoping to proceed with that before Thanksgiving.
Of course, that would be, as Commissioner Bohm has mentioned, that would be after the election, too. So we, I guess I'm trying to figure out whether to go tonight or to wait until, I mean, for full approval, final approval.
Right, right.
Commissioner, Commissioner Howard Heidman?
I, I'm just curious, as I read through this, I get the impression it's not only an issue of health care cost, but it's an issue of manning the libraries to provide the best service to the patrons.
That is correct. Yes, yes. We could, if necessary, go with a status quo staffing level and wait for the Obamacare issue to be settled. If the look-back period is 12 months, then obviously, we would be needing to consider funding possible penalties and then changes from that point forward. But the reality that is important, I think, to the library administration and my team is that we have really identified an opportunity here to provide better service to the public. We would be considering changing our four-tier system to a two-tier system, which would allow for the smallest branches to actually be open six days a week rather than a condensed schedule of five days a week. It would provide, I just think it would provide a better service to the public and more efficient and better use of our staff and their skills and abilities.
Mr. Graytop?
Yeah, I would, at this time, I would like to move that this go to the full board for approval. And I say that just to kind of qualify what I'm saying, based on the fact that at our next meeting, which is only a week away, the election will be over, we will know some results then, and we can move at that time to go a different direction if we so choose. But at least we'll be in a position to move forward if we have to at that particular time. That's why I made my motion.
Is there a support?
I would support that.
Okay. Supported by Commissioner Heidman. Further discussion?
Well, I guess we asked the obvious question. You got the cost on here and the hours you want to compensate.
Yes.
How's it affect your budget? Where's the money coming from?
Actually, we can cover these changes within our budget, and our staffing salaries line items will only be about $40,000 more than what we budgeted this year. We will be able to cover that comfortably.
I'd like to have that information to see what the budget's going to look like before we go on. Because it's a little bit substantial here to cover 6,500 in what you're requesting. I'd want to compare it to what the budget is, so before I can make a, want a statement or, you know, approval or disapproval in it.
Certainly. I can have that available to you.
Allison, I know in our discussion we had on the phone, and again, I appreciate you so much, giving us the information. And you mentioned the unemployment compensation?
Yes.
Portion, is that, that's not in this document we have in front of us, but that's a small figure, but what is it?
Right.
Assuming that the 14 would apply or?
Right. Assuming that the individuals who are impacted negatively by this change would apply for underemployment. In conversation with HR and with Mr. Kaufman, there are a multitude of variables that the unemployment office would utilize to come at a number for any particular individual. That would include things like deductions and number of hours and that sort of thing. And the HR department provided a number of about $45 per week as a very rough estimate per individual. So 14 individuals, $45 a week for 26 weeks is about $16,000, $17,000.
Just guess I want to hear from Bill on it, Terry, just what his take was.
Mr. Kaufman?
Sure, we've been, I've been communicating pretty regularly with Ms. Arnold regarding this issue. We've pulled HR in to assist her as well. We've met internally a number of times to talk about the potential impact of the Affordable Care Act. And I've explained to you a number of times as well that we really don't know what the full impact is, because some of the rules are still being developed. We met earlier this week and talked a little bit more about it as well and where we think we stand, because we realize, as has been pointed out to you by Ms. Arnold, that we've got to provide some firm direction to the other department heads and where we stand and what we need to do to move ahead. There was a meeting that was held, I believe it was last week, with Blue Cross Blue Shield and with our third-party administrators, Brown and Brown. There was new information that was developed that I think has been very helpful in providing some further clarification. We're not quite ready to roll out a firm recommendation to department heads yet. There was a meeting that some HR staff went to yesterday, I believe it was, all day yesterday, a workshop on the Affordable Care Act and recommendations on what communities should be doing to prepare. We haven't gotten a report back yet on what some of those findings are. But I think moving forward, as you have with your recommendation to move these along to the full board by next Thursday, we'll probably have a pretty good idea of the strategy that we would be rolling out to the department heads and the other elected officials in preparing for affordable health care.
Is there any further discussion or any further questions? Do we need a roll call?
Just for full board.
Okay, for full board. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to item 7B, service agreement between the Health Department and Veterans Affairs Community Outreach. And I see both of those departments are here this evening.
I drew the short straw, obviously. They set me up.
Maybe we, maybe we got the short straw.
It could be. Good evening, gentlemen. What we have is a situation where we can do a little collaborating, I believe. Mr. Kaufman had some discussions with Deborah Ward in that Veterans Affairs, and she was looking for someone to do some outreach, some education activities on behalf of the veterans. And that's something that we do already. We do that for community, for Downriver Community Services. We do a lot of outreach for ourselves, for our own health programs and advocate programs. So it seemed like a pretty good fit. So Deborah and I and Dr. Burkettan, we sat down and discussed an agreement. And we had a retirement back in May of Sue Amato, who was our health educator director. And we've held that position frozen per the hiring freeze, which will come up November 31st. 31st this month. And Jennifer Mahalik is in our health educator position. We'd like to place her into that director position, which does leave a vacant health educator position on our manning table, that we were debating on whether to hire her part-time or to leave vacant, but not necessarily fill full-time. However, meeting with, with Deborah and looking at her needs and what we can provide, and a lot of, a lot of things we can provide overlap what she needs done. So we, so we discussed a situation with her. And I think we're both satisfied that we can, that the Health Department can provide her services adequately. And she would cover the funding from Veterans Affairs for half of this particular position. And then we would go ahead and look for a hiring freeze lift on that position to hire it before the end of the year. And that would, because we were looking at least a part-time, so we would fund half of it. Veterans Affairs would fund half of it. We could do outreach for the Health Department and for Veterans Affairs in a collaborative event. So that's, that's what we're looking for tonight.
Okay, are there any questions? And I see Deb is, is here, too. So Dr. Merkyle is here as well. So we could certainly ask questions if, if there are any. Do we have a motion, questions?
No questions.
Okay. I guess there's no questions. Okay, I'm sorry.
I just have one. The merit step increases, I see, have eight steps there. What's the timeframe for that?
Those are yearly steps. We would, we would essentially look to hire at the first step, but policy does allow us to go slightly above that if we have the right, you know, the correct quality of candidate that we both would agree on. We would both have to agree on this candidate. But we would be looking at starting them at the lowest possible step, either by policy or at the number one step of this, depending on the qualifications.
Sure, there's a thing in place, but that seems pretty substantial on eight years.
It's a bargain, bargain agreement.
I, I thought, I don't know how to get close. I thought, very importantly, this position is something that represents the county. This is somebody that'll be out at events, speaking, and, and we, you know, the skill level to have somebody do that professionally and in the manner that we would like, that we prefer, because this is a very, a lot of the information that we have to deliver involves a lot of legal questions in regard to legal questions about benefits and things of that nature. So there's going to be some specialty involved here. It's just not a matter of, of saying, hey, here you go, go there, here's some paperwork. It's gonna, it's gonna be a little bit more massaged to be effective. Because quite frankly, I'm looking for somebody that before, in the past, with our limited budget, I've always been the one to do all that. So it kind of limits me from being in the office and doing things that I need to be doing. So before, you know, before we, you guys, some of you remember when, when I first got here in 98, we had me and Kim in that office. And so for us to be effective, I was working hands-on all the time with certain things. So this is, we feel it's a very, needs to be a very qualified person. And also keep in mind, you know, people might ask the question about how is a veterans information topic going to melt in with the Health Department's information? Well, this is what we're finding out. The people we need to market isn't necessarily the veterans themselves. The people we need to give the education to are the family members that are taking care of their veteran parents. It's amazing that we get, I would say, 80% of calls we get are from adult children that are inquiring on behalf of their parents. So we feel that this is perfect, because they're already doing that to the community at large. So when, I have to give kudos to Bill, because when Bill and I were talking, he had mentioned this possibility for, at least to consider. And because of that, it really started some thought processing on how really closely related we can, can work together on this. And it, and it will help us even be more improved than I ever thought it to be. And so that gets me excited in the Veterans Department, so.
Just in support of it, I just want an explanation of that. I think you guys got a good agreement here that you're going to work together and know where the money's coming from, in support of it.
I would like to say, since I'm also representative to both the departments, but I would say that I am very excited about this process of working together. Here we have another example. Semcog's gone, so they're not going to know this, but maybe they already know it. But, but I, but I'm very excited about, here we are, two departments working together to move forward for a service. And I'm going to support this if we get a motion to do it this evening.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make that motion at this time, that we move the service agreement between the Health Department and Veterans Affairs Community Outreach to the full board.
Moved by Commissioner Gray, top.
Support, second.
Supported by Commissioner Rushing. And is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay.
Greg, thank you.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on down to Veterans of the Year proclamation. I think the proclamation is in front of us. You have a copy this evening. That individual is not here. But we need to, we need to vote on both.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we do this for final action tonight.
Is there a second?
Support.
Discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carried.
You want to give that proclamation to Ms. Ward and for you to present?
I could do that. But I also, historically, invite somebody from the Board of Commissioners if they would like to attend and, and present that for tonight's purposes. I'll go ahead and take that. And anybody interested in doing that, just let me know, and I'll give them the specifics. It's November 10th, Saturday. So.
Yet Mary still?
I believe Mary, May O'Brien, but I can double check. I can't remember off the top of my head of location, but I can definitely get the information. So, thank you.
All right. Moving on down to other human service matters. Seeing none, information only. Is there any information only? I would ask a motion to receive and file packets.
So moved.
Second. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carried.
Move to adjourn to executive session.
Is there a second?
Support, second.
Then we'll come right back out after that.
Yeah, all, all in favor.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carried. Our size for a adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
Support.
All in favor.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.
I'd like to call the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners Judiciary Public Safety Committee meeting to order. Would the clerk take the role, please?
Commissioner Samasco?
Here.
Commissioner Ward?
Here.
Commissioner Bohm?
Here.
Commissioner London?
Here.
Commissioner Rushing?
Here.
Commissioner Graytop?
Here. Any additions, deletions, or changes to the agenda? Hearing none. Citizens to be heard. Are there any citizens wishing to address the Judiciary and Public Safety Committee? Hearing none. Any motion to accept the agenda?
So moved.
I'll support.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Conceptual initiatives? Nothing. No old business. Moving on to new business, item 7A, for the fiscal year 2013 Community Corrections Contract. This is a annual thing that happens all the time. I've spoken with the departments, and it is just a routine piece, so.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Motion, support. Is there any questions, discussions? One thing I will point out, and I pointed out to them on the, on the Department of Corrections page, they said the grantee would be St. Clair County, and they put the grantee telephone numbers as those in Lansing. That was a minor typo, but that has been corrected. So, that was it. Anything else? No questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion will go to the full board. 7B, fiscal year 2013 Day Reporting Supervision Agreement. Again, this is something we do on an annual basis.
So moved.
Support.
Motion, support. Questions? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That will go to the full board. Item C is the Mental Health Court Grant, fiscal year 2013 contract approval. Not to bore you, but once again, this is an annual thing that we do.
So moved.
Support.
Motion, support. Any questions? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion will go to the full board. Are there any other judiciary and public safety matters to come to the committee tonight? I had three short items, then. If, if I may, first off, during the storm that was running around the area here, I got a report from Central Dispatch, and 9/11 calls came in, a ton of calls came in. Everybody jumped on board, handled everything in a very, very professional manner. Got a great report here, if somebody wants to see it, if you haven't already. And in particular, call taker Heather Sheldon worked from 3:00 PM until past 1:00 a couple of nights in a row, just fielding these calls and sorting everything out. According to people over there, things went very, very well. So kudos to the Central Dispatch Authority for what they did. The second thing I would like to mention is that Ken Cummings in the tri-hospital EMS sent three wagons, buses, if you will, to the site on the East Coast to help with whatever they needed to help with over there. So there's three ambulances from tri-hospitals on the East Coast working. I thought that was terrific. And the final thing I want to mention is, now that the sheriff is down in Algonquin, crime is really coming to a screeching halt between the citizens and the sheriff. They caught a guy trying to break into a house. The citizens got out there at 4:00 in the morning and kind of herded him into a direction. One guy ran away, dropped his cellphone. They herded the other guy around. The sheriff's car was right around the corner. Man, they got him, locked him up. And they're tracing the cellphone. They have the other guy. So my kudos to the sheriff for taking over in Algonquin, doing a great job. Anything else? Oh, no.
No, not real. Just one thing, and I talked to Jeff on this. Of course, with this storm Sandy that came through, I did bring up NIMS, and I would recommend that some more board members get qualified with NIMS, because what happened in with Katrina, if you don't have a board member that is qualified and certified in NIMS, the county is not eligible for any federal funds, any emergency. But I am qualified.
Very good point.
Other commissioners.
Very good point. Thank you for that.
Great.
Commissioner Hydeman.
I, I have to comment. Keep in mind, those deputies were former policemen in Algonquin.
I was hoping somebody would say that. Thank you, Howard. All right. Any other judiciary matters? Nothing? Information only. You have the Resident Substance Abuse Treatment Program Site Monitoring Visit. And then we can receive and file all of that.
Move to receive and file, Mr. Chairman.
Support. Motion, support to receive and file. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
I move, we recess.
Support. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting's over.
I'd like to call the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners Environmental and Public Works Committee meeting to order. Madam Clerk, would you take the role?
Commissioner Samasco?
Here.
Commissioner Ward? Excuse me, Commissioner Bohm?
Here.
Commissioner London?
Here.
Commissioner Rushing?
Here.
Commissioner Graytop?
Here.
Commissioner Hydeman?
I hear. Any additions, deletions, or changes to the agenda? Seeing none.
Move to approve the agenda as printed, Mr. Chairman.
Support. Supported. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carried. Any citizens to be heard? Seeing none. Any updates?
I have one update I would like to make. I mentioned earlier that, to some commissioners individually, that I did attend the I-69 Next Michigan Development Corporation Summit. It was primarily centered around the multimodal opportunities. In other words, how can we utilize air, water, highways, and rail to develop the economic opportunities of the area? Most of the discussion centered around what we could do to assist our agricultural businesses in the county, get their commodities to market, and that sort of thing. What I thought was interesting is, oh, I'm thinking, four or five years ago, we had a meeting with the Farm Bureau, and that was one of the first issues they brought up. You know, how are we going to get our, our commodities to market in an effective manner? And the thing that surprised me the most is the projected expansion of agricultural businesses in Michigan for the next decade or so. I, I had no idea they were projecting that kind of growth in, in, in business. So, very interesting meeting, really, really excited about what they're doing. Having said that, any other commissioners with updates? Moving on, conceptual initiatives. Commissioner Kauf, I mean Administrator Kaufman, sorry about that.
No, nothing.
Old business, the Landfill Regulatory Compliance Monitoring Agreement. I think it's the first one on your agenda. We, we didn't table that, did we?
No.
No, this is just, it's removed.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Okay. Motion made by Commissioner Bohm, second by Commissioner Samasco. Any discussion? Any comments you'd like to make, Mr. Kaufman?
Well, one of the reasons it was removed from the agenda at your, in October, was that we had not reached an agreement with Goldar Associates on the terms of the agreement. There were some issues that were still being ironed out by Corporation Council with the vendors, attorneys. Those issues have been addressed. The appropriate changes have been made to the agreement. And that is why, is it, it is here before you today. This contract, by the way, is for the
Monitoring.
Surface water and groundwater monitoring out at the landfill.
What did they say we were going to be saving by, over the previous method of, do you recall, the savings?
No, I've got it. $18,600 a year.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Any other questions or discussion? Seeing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. And we'll have this at the full board meeting. New business, the Brownfield Redevelopment Grant Application. I saw Jeffrey here. Jeffrey, you want to take that?
Well, good evening. Jeff Donaldson, I'm senior planner with the St. Clair County MetLife Planning Commission. And I'm here this evening to request authorization to submit a grant application to the United States Environmental Protection Agency on behalf of the county's Brownfield Redevelopment Authority for a Brownfield revolving loan fund grant. Revolving loan fund grants provide funding to grant recipients to capitalize revolving loan funds that provide loans and subgrants to carry out cleanup activities at Brownfield sites throughout communities. Funds may be used to clean up sites, contaminated petroleum, and/or hazardous substances. And that's a little bit of clarification. I noticed there was a typo in the staff report there, so I wanted to clarify that. Some questions you might have about it. What would it cost the county, the grant, if we apply for this grant application? Well, there is a 20% cost share. It can be fulfilled in, in kind, if you will. We envision developing the grant application in such a fashion that the cost would be imposed upon developers or revolving loan fund applicants. So if somebody has come forward with an application for revolving loan funds, and the project was $100,000, well, they better be prepared, or the project was, they're requesting $100,000, they better be prepared to put $120,000 into the project, if you will, to cover at least 20% of that match. And that's how we would propose covering the, the match requirement under, under the grant requirements. So in translation, we don't anticipate any funding having to come out of the county for this Are the funds restricted to certain areas in the county? The answer, that's no. Funds can be used and actually must be used throughout the county per stipulations of the grant. And is there any, is there also a connection between the existing grant that we have, the EPA assessment grant, and this one? And the answer is yes, there is a connection. In fact, in the development of our grant application, we're going to draw the logical connection in, in, between our current grant, where we're developing an inventory of known Brownfield sites. And this is the next step to move towards cleanup of those sites. So it would be a logical progression in terms of applying for this funding after having received a million dollars from the EPA to develop assessments a couple of years back. Just, and in case you have any questions with regards to that. Just in case you have any questions with regards to that, a couple of years back, I wanted to give you a couple of stats. Our current program with our current EPA assessment grant, we've expended two hundred fifty thousand dollars of that million dollars so far, and our projections are that those dollars have leveraged an additional five hundred, fifty-four million dollars in project investments throughout the county. We also projected the funds so far have retained a hundred and sixty jobs and may create up to five hundred and twenty jobs throughout the county. And that's just with our assessment grant. So you can see the power of using these redevelopment dollars throughout our community to redevelopment sites that already have the infrastructure, all the things necessary with development, and doing it in an efficient manner, if you will. So at this point, at this time, what I'd like to seek authorization from is to go ahead and apply to EPA for that million dollar revolving loan, up to a million dollars in revolving loan funds to capitalize a revolving loan fund here in the county to be used by the county's brownfield redevelopment authority.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to the full board, the brownfield redevelopment grant application, as presented.
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Greitab. Any other questions from commissioners? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carried. Thank you. Thank you, Jeffrey. The consultant agreement with Smiths Creek Operations, Jim Lockston, Don?
I would make a motion. I would support it.
It's pretty clear cut. Any questions for Bill?
One thing I want to talk about, we have a meeting set up on November 29th, which is going to be a workshop, and the topic is going to be garbage. And what I mean by garbage, it's going to be talking about the landfill operations and some other suggestions, recommendations, so on and so forth. So just kind of mark your calendars on that November 29th.
It's a 5:30 meeting?
Yeah, we can do it at 5:30. It's fine. We'll be inviting solid waste folks, just all of the above, and Jim and his partner are going to be here to continue discussion as far as, you know, our landfilling.
We have some nice issues to discuss regarding that, frankly. David?
Just looking at the contract, which I do, I see it starts on November 1st. Do you want this for final action or just to take it to the full board?
What's your druthers?
Full board.
Full board. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carried. Moving on, Resolution 12-44, approving road commission S2 grant funding for wastewater treatment plant improvements. And I see Ken here, and Ken's going to do it. With backup from Kurt.
Ken, you don't need that backup part, do you?
A protector. Thank you. Kenneth Forster, chairman of the Board of Public Works, St. Clair County. On behalf of the Board of Public Works, wastewater treatment plant, the three government entities that the wastewater treatment plant services, Algonack, Clay, and IRA, we are here tonight, this is my son, Kirk Weston, we are here tonight to urge the adoption of the resolution that you have in front of you for the S2 grant. The S2 grant will provide funding for 90% of engineering and planning for proposed improvements that are being planned at the wastewater treatment plant. The improvements that we are looking at are the influent screening of the wastewater treatment plant. Influence screening means the incoming, the raw sewage, it's the headworks is what we call it at the plant. We're looking to improve that at a cost of two hundred thousand to four hundred thousand. We're looking at a digester boiler improvement. It's another stage in the treatment process whereby it fuels the, or heats the micronisms, microorganisms that produce the feeding effect on the sewage. It's a kind of reusable energy that comes back in a form of methane gas from the little bugs who are doing their business in the digesters. We're looking to save money on utility bills by the use of that. We looked at possibly selling the gas, but it was determined that it was not clean enough to resale, so we're just going to put it back into the process. Along with the planning phase, we're looking at two more possible improvements at the plant. One is a grit classifier replacement at a cost of a hundred and twenty thousand, and the second one is a SCADA, which is an acronym for Supervising Control and Data Acquisition Automatic Chlorine Feed System. It gives us a real-time look at what's going on at the plant, a instance notice. We realize these monies, the amount of monies that we're talking about are pretty hefty, but you have to realize that in this particular business, the water, wastewater treatment plant business, number one, the parameters are very, very strict for the operation, necessitating the equipment to be where it should be. Number two, the equipment itself is an ongoing victim. It's continuously being cannibalized by the water, the wastewater that we are treating, which results in corrosion, failures, breakdowns, any number of internal problems. Our staff is very good. We have four people on staff at the wastewater treatment plant. They work for the road commission, and they do an outstanding job of preventative maintenance and repairs, but there comes a time when we have to invest like anything else, and this is one of those times. If we don't, the parameters that we must live by are violated, and actually, the health and welfare and the safety of our citizens becomes at risk. So, we seek your authorization for the S2 grant. The S2 grant will allow 50% funding for the required planning, planning only, of the phases that we're looking at. The 90% factor at a cost of thirty-six thousand, six hundred allows us to get away with a little more than thirty-five hundred dollars cost on our end. Once we are approved, there's some forty million dollars available for these S2 grants, and they say that our chances are very good at obtaining it. The planning can then take place. The future work can then be decided upon by the three governmental entities, Clay, Algonack, and IRA, and our board acting as agents for your board. This application, the S2 grant, is a precursor for any future work that we would have, or would want to do there, and also have to do there. Two items, the influence screening and the boiler replacement, which is about two hundred thousand, a hundred and ninety thousand, that can qualify for a green energy grant, which would cover up the 50% of the eligible costs. The other costs, SRFs, the state revolving fund loans, our budget amount, we have set aside two hundred and sixty thousand. Each governmental entity that we serve down there contributes a amount that we determine to let us have four hundred thousand dollars at the bank. It used to be five hundred thousand in the early or late 90s. We changed it to four hundred thousand. If, in fact, we do have to go for these major repairs, we have that seed money to work with. Once we use it, they put their amounts back in on a quarterly basis based upon their share of the plant. We've got it divided into ratios percentage-wise, 30, 30, and 35%. So, they come up with the needed money, we never have a problem, and they work very well with us, and hopefully, we work very well with them. So, we ask you tonight if you would authorize this grant, this application for this grant, so that we can proceed, and once we get the grant, find out what projects are viable, and then once we find out, we can go on to the design stage of these particular improvements, and then once again, we can apply for another S2 grant to cover that particular stage, being a design stage.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Greitab?
Ken, a couple of questions. One, with these repairs in place, if that eventually happens, will that give you more volume, or would that give you cleaner water, or will that just keep the system running?
Say that again, Bo.
Will you get cleaner water out of this, or will you get more volume that you can handle with this equipment?
The different, the different improvements are going to give us different results. The intake, the headworks is going to certainly improve the quality of the wastewater coming into the plant whereby reducing the necessary screening and filtration process as opposed to what we have now, which is non-existent. We have bars, but we don't have screens down there. So all this stuff comes in, and it just tears those pumps up. And it's the way it was built. I mean, you know, it's nobody's fault.
Second question is, will these costs be passed on to the individual homeowners in the form of their water bill, or will the entities just pay it out of their general fund?
That's going to be up to the different, or the three governmental entities down there, because they're the ones footing the bill for the wastewater treatment plant. We are the administrators of the plant. We supply the operational work. We supply the manpower. We supply everything through you folks or under you folks, but they pay the bill. The budget is their budget. It's not our budget.
Okay.
So, you know, what they decide-
Thank you.
Well, I don't have a question, but I was going to move, I was going to move to the full board, the Resolution 1244, approving the road commission S grant funding for wastewater treatment plant improvement.
Just a question, did you want this for final action?
Pardon me?
Did you want this for final action?
Uh, what's the time deal?
We have time, it's up to this-
Yeah, I think-
I noticed that the date you had down was October 18th, 2012.
Yeah. We made a smell before it called back because you are the owner of the facility. They wanted it thrown to this board, not the, it would be helpful if you took action tonight.
I would change that to final action, the motion for final action.
Support? Supported by Commissioner Rushing. Any other discussion or questions? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carried.
Thanks, Larry.
Thank you.
You don't, we'll call on that?
No, it's a grant application.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, the Goodell's Park bunker building renovation. Mark Brishu, the director for Park and Rec is here tonight.
Thank you. In your packet, you should have both mailed packet and the handed packet, you should have information on the project. We're asking for approval for a contract with Brown Builders of Lexington. If you recognize the name, it's the same contractor, was the general contractor for the Columbus Lodge. In your packet tonight, you have actually a picture of the building. The building, we call it the bunker because that's what it looks like. It was a former head-in building for the radio tower that sat right in front of the fire museum.
What do you use it for now?
Storage for items that can or should not be stored in the garage, the heated garage, mainly gasoline, sometimes all power equipment, things like that, that the risk managers don't want us mixing into our occupied garage space. The building has a flat roof, and flat roofs, as they want to do, leak, and so there's infiltration of the water into the block walls. So we want to do two things, is put a new roof on it and also provide a area for us to move our fuel storage tanks to a location that's better supervised. Currently, the tanks are located over by the railroad tracks. There are single-walled tanks that are in containment structures. They are visited about once a year by thieves looking for low-cost fuel. So, after much discussion on what would be a better location, both operationally and security-wise, it was near the operations garage that's staffed ten hours a day, or no, more than ten hours, twenty, sixteen hours a day. So the idea is to extend the roof line over the, over the tanks and provide protection for the tanks. The project includes the metal roof that would be matched, the metal roofs that were installed this last year on the barns, hardy board siding on the block portion of the building, and do the electricals and cement work that needs to be done to accommodate the fuel tanks. Three bids were received for the project, and Brown Builders was the low bidder. To date, we've had, Si Design did the design, and we asked very specifically, take careful look at the fact that we're storing, putting fuel storage tanks under a common roof. So, they've, we've spent thirty-five hundred dollars in architectural fees to date on the project. So, it was designed last November, and we purposely held the project in abeyance to see how the lodge building project came in and other projects, and now we feel comfortable budget-wise that we can handle this and get the project done in the off-season when there's less impact on operations and use of the park. Any questions?
I would entertain a motion to-
I move that we put this up to the full board.
Okay. Do we have a second? Second by Commissioner Greitab. Any other questions or discussion?
For a quick question, Mark, is there a canopy over the tanks right now, or is that going to be added on?
No, the current tanks sit in basically concrete bathtubs. There are single-walled tanks, and they aren't covered, so we're constantly dealing with the water getting into the tanks, into the containment tanks.
Thank you.
I have a question. We were talking about security systems. If people are trying to get discount gas or fuel, is there any discussion about the security systems, if not now, in the future?
It's proximity to the operations garage, and we are looking first for the lodge and then the light station, and certainly this facility here. We could install cameras on the corner of the operations center and direct it towards the tanks and keep that under surveillance. So yes, that location will be very amenable to installing the video surveillance.
Okay. Any other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. We'll take this up at the regular board meeting. Oh, you're, oh, Park and Rec Commission, bay to, bridge to bay signage and trail improvements.
For several years, the Park Commission's been working with Norm Cox of the Greenways Collaborative to design an effective and unified signage system for the Bridge to Bay Trail. As you know, the Bridge to Bay Trail is a collaboration between 13 local units of government in the county. Our pledge, in addition to providing assistance with local grant matches, is to provide marketing and promotion of the trail. One thing that we have heard consistently by visitors to the county that use the trail is that because the trail is put in piece by piece by the participating community, sometimes there is gaps, and people get lost, and there's no signage that directs trail users to downtowns or other community facilities. So the Park Commission, several years ago, committed to trying to get a unified format together, and before you, as a result of that, we went out to bid in August, did not receive any bids. Through BidNet, we contacted contractors that we- Through, through BidNet, we, uh, contacted, uh, contractors that we knew, uh, knew about the project. There were some timing issues, and there was some information kiosks that were in, included in the project that, uh, they didn't want to tackle. So, we removed the items that we thought were causing people not to bid and rebid it out on BidNet. Unfortunately, we've only got two bids next time around. Uh, one is by, was for the full signage package, and the second was for the, uh, line striping only. The low bidder is MLS Signs of Chesterfield Township. Uh, the, we were expecting the bigger companies, the big PK contracting, IRS contracting, the ones you see on expressways. We expected those ones, uh, those folks to be bidding, uh, for whatever reason, they chose not to the second time. Our consultant has talked to ML, interviewed MLS and talked to their references and think they're fully capable of doing the work. So, our recommendation is for you to award a contract to, uh, the low bidder, MLS Signs.
Uh, Mark, could you elaborate a little bit on, on the extent of work that's, uh, going to be entailed in this in terms of number of signs?
Right. It is, uh, the bid specifications package was two hundred and eleven pages. And, this is all done to road, uh, road sta, uh, road signage standards. It's at road crossings, driveways, and so, it's all done by federal standards, so, it's very exacting. But, the project, uh, runs from Chartier Road in Cotreville Township, uh, through Marine City, uh, sections in China, in East China Township, through City of St. Clair and in the, uh, St. Clair Township. I counted up today, the, the contract includes seven hundred and thirteen signs.
And that includes...
So, it's, it's a big project, so, and a lot of those are on two signposts. They will be responsible for doing everything, pulling the old signs, installing new signs, doing striping. Uh, it's not anticipated. I, we expect the signs to be installed, uh, through the winter. Temperature and mother nature will determine when the pavement marking portion would be done. So, it's a very extensive project.
Commissioner Gray Tap.
I had a couple of questions, Mark. Um, you're going from Chartier to Marine City, or, um, Chartier, Marine City to Yankee Road. Is that, I'm not sure, the construction going on right now, is that included, the new piece that's being constructed right now?
The new piece is separated by Yankee Road that's going, uh, taking place on, um, on, uh, the highway.
So, is, is that piece included in this?
No. One of the things I do, I'm glad you brought this, one of the things I, as a pre-construction meeting, is to meet with the consultant and the contract, because there's so many signs, they have to be special, or, these are road quality signs, reflective signs, is to do a walkthrough of all these signs and do a double check. I did, uh, notify the consultant of that project going forward. So, the good news is they should be hitting the new sign standards, but I think we, we owe it to them to double check, and if we need to make adjustments, uh...
What about the piece running from, um, Michigan Street to Roberts Road that runs through the state park area? Is there any signage in that area?
The, the intention is to do this, that, that's, uh, that's, this stretch that's included in this contract is the longest, pretty much contiguous, uh, continuous stretch. To do this from first, and then, the next phase, go south to Algonak, and then, the third phase, go north towards Mary, uh, Marysville. So, even though this is a hundred thousand, this is intended as the first piece of the puzzle, and then, work out all the bugs. I'm sure there'll be some adjustments, and then, we're gonna go on to very, other phases of the entire Bridge to Bay system. So, that's a good question, that. This will not be the, the end-all, this will be the first step on the upgrade.
And the last comment I have, and it's just a comment, I'm, I'm leery sometimes of going with just one bid, uh, and I understand that you, but I have seen bids come into this thing with three and four bids, and I've seen huge differences between a low bid and the next bid, or a high bid, and going with just one bid, I'm just a little nervous with doing that. I don't know if there's a way to get more bids.
Well, I did ask the consultant, you know, please go through the unit, there is a, unit prices through the whole thing, and he thought unit prices matched the, uh, metro area market for pricing.
Question, Howard. Commissioner Rushing?
Well, and I'm, mine's on that, I definitely would like to have more bids, because, breaking it down, that's fourteen hundred dollars a sign, and that just seems pretty excessive to me. Regular signs are closer to three hundred dollars, like what we have in the townships, the ones that we put in, Welcome, you know, at Riley Township. I'm not sure how we get to fourteen hundred, and these signs are actually a little bit smaller than the township signs. They're comparable, but, uh, that just seems, fourteen hundred dollars seems a little extreme.
What I would offer is, if you're uncomfortable with that, I, that we could hold, uh, hold it and not award a bid, and wait and rebid it out next spring. Now, if, if companies are busier, we may not get any more, we may, I don't know. I don't know if we'll get a lower price, we may...
Imagine if we do, whoever we award this to, if this happens to be the company, when you do the extensions, wherever it happens to be, as we go forward, we probably want to stay with the same contractor to get a like product.
I wouldn't think so. They're hitting our specifications at any future phases, we'd rebid.
These are federal and state specifications?
Yes.
Did you ever talk to the road commission about, you know, they have a sign shop over there and all that stuff?
They've, uh, we submitted the specs for them, and it's, I, I think they were leery of the size of it, too.
Commissioner Samasco?
So, one question I had for, uh, Mark was, I thought the road commission had a sign shop, you know, why can't we get involved with looking at that rather than just bidding?
It'll generally tell you, sometimes, those things cost a lot more for him.
I'm sure. I just said, was it looked at, was it something, just a piece that got missed?
And that was a question, uh, Bill had about, why weren't the local, it's a huge order, so, even with this company of farming it out to a national provider...
What efforts were done to draw in local contractors? What physically, practically did you do to publicize that?
We worked through the purchasing department, and BidNet is, and went out all through all the sign companies in southeast Michigan, have access to it.
So, you had a list of sign companies, and they got a direct mail? And then, we also did something, Bill, through purchasing, is that?
No, purchasing did it through BidNet.
Okay, what, do you know what they did, Bill?
I'm, I'm sure they posted on BidNet. You know, most, um, contractors out there now, um, people that are involved, involved in the construction trades have gotten used to looking at BidNet on a regular basis, or, or...
Is signage something that would, you think that there'd be on that, too?
Yes. Um, there's, most municipalities in Michigan use it. Um, I, as I understand how it operates, if you subscribe to it, you can actually get notifications when something's been posted out there.
Besides BidNet, what other efforts did we make? Besides BidNet, what other efforts did we make?
That's, actually, I think that's all that was done in this particular case, and, and in most cases, that's what we do now to advertise most all of our jobs. Now, um, we do, on a lot of our projects, check, and we're going through this with the Convention Center project, is, we check to make sure that those contractors that are local, that we know may be interested in the project and that may still exist, um, we make sure that they're aware of the fact that this is gonna be posted on Mitten or BidNet, and if they don't, if they're not familiar with it, we will provide them with the information that's necessary to get access to it.
Is that a direct mail? How do you contact those folks?
A, a lot of times, just phone calls.
That's, thanks.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yeah, I, just for correction, talking with Phil here, he did a quick thing. My math was bad. It's actually about a hundred and forty-five dollars per sign.
Oh, okay.
And, the seven hundred and thirteen total signs, how many total miles is that covering?
That's over, it's, I would get, I'm, I'm giving you a guess, uh, between thirteen and fourteen miles of trail. It's the longest continuous section.
Okay, so, that's over fifty signs per mile? I open my mouth right now.
Well, you know, it's, every dri, every time you cross, cross a driveway, you're supposed to have a sign, and like the sections in St. Clair where it goes through the business district, there's a lot of driveway, so...
So, it's a hundred and forty-five dollars per sign?
Correct. I, I wanna make that correction.
Thank you.
Put in paper, it's a hundred and forty-five per sign.
Oh, that, that sounds a lot more palatable.
Yes, it does.
Uh, uh, at this time, no other questions? Uh, all in favor, say aye?
We don't have a motion.
Oh, we need a motion.
Let me make the motion.
Okay. Second by, we need a second?
Well, this is go to, go to full board, right?
Goes full board.
Right.
I can second then.
Okay. Second by Commissioner Rushing. All in favor say aye?
Record, we will call?
Uh, we're not.
This isn't final action.
Not for final action. We're, we're sending it to regular board meeting. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carried. Uh, landfill activities report. Any questions, uh, for, uh, Administrator Kaufman on that? No questions? Uh, I, I would entertain a motion to, uh, accept and file the, uh, landfill report, activities report.
Motion.
Second? Supported. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Any other environmental matters? Seeing none, any other information?
Motion to receive and file.
Support.
Support. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion to recess.
Motion.
Support.
We are adjourned. I mean, we're recessed.
Am I Tim? Is that what's...
You are Tim.
Okay. Put your glasses on, then. This time, we'll call to order the meeting of the St. Clair County Ways and Means Committee for Thursday, November the first. May we have, uh, roll call, please?
Commissioner Ward, Commissioner Heideman?
Here.
Commissioner Bohm?
Here.
Commissioner London?
Here.
Commissioner Rushing?
Here.
Commissioner Gray Tap?
Here.
Commissioner Samasco?
Here. Any additions or deletions to the agenda?
I move the approval of the agenda as presented.
Support. Motion in support, all in favor?
Aye. Opposed?
Motion carried. Item three, citizens to be heard. Nothing submitted in the form of, uh, citizen comments. Pass to, uh, updates. Anyone have an update? No updates. Conceptual initiatives. Any comments regarding its conceptual initiatives? Controller's indicating no as well. Uh, old business, expansion of fiber to air industrial park. Is that yours, Bill?
Mr. Chairman, at this time, I would move to forward to the regular board meeting the recommendation to approve the addendum to the professional service contract with Utility Services Authority, LLC, in an amount not to exceed one hundred and ten thousand dollars for the installation of fiber to the airport industrial park contingent upon receipt of grant dollars under the Federal Port Security Grant.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion or commentary on that item?
Uh, I forwarded a thing to you guys today, basically saying that a grant has been awarded. Money's going to be available, so on and so forth. Um, if I'm not mistaken, this fiber is a piece of the matching piece that the county up for the project. Correct me if I'm wrong?
Um, actually, I believe we're planning on using a portion of the grant funds...
For the fiber.
Correct. Tiffany? For this, for this work, yes.
They're intertwined.
Yep. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, we're gonna move this, the motion is to, uh, move to full board, correct? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. New business, item seven A, BiTech One Solution Contract Amendment, final action item. Who has that, Bill?
Um, actually, who, ladies, which one of you would prefer to inform the board?
BiTech is the accounting, budgeting, HR software that the county uses, and, um, basically, this software is an upgrade to our existing package, and the current software that we have is end-of-life. If we don't replace it, eventually, we will not receive support from the vendor on the product. We did, at, uh, because of the cost of the upgrade, we did look into some alternative solutions of going with another software package, and that was really cost prohibitive. I think the most conservative estimate was around three hundred and fifty thousand dollars to make a change, and it would probably be more than that. So, um, staying with what we have is the most cost-effective solution, and, uh, the costs you have in front of you are the, a combination of upgrading the software, um, services from the company to help us migrate our data, training from the company, and some, um, hardware and third-party software investments to support the system.
Thank you, Tiffany. Any questions? Go ahead.
I think you already stated it, uh, when is the, uh, support run out?
Actually, the software is considered end-of-life this year, December thirty-first of two thousand and twelve. Um, I, it's our understanding that the company will require a, what they call an uplift charge to continue to support it. We, I believe, will try and negotiate waiving that fee. I think that's why we're asking for final action on approval of this contract tonight, so that we can say to the company, hey, we're, we're in the process of upgrading, so, please waive these fees and, and, um, continue to support us until we complete the migration.
You use the term end-of-life? What is that?
The software that we're currently on is end-of-life. In other words, no more support, no more upgrades.
Okay. All right, thank you. Any other questions or comments?
This is for final action, right, Mr. Chairman?
It is for final action, and the question I have, Bill, does this have a monetary component on that or not? Do we have to have voice vote, roll call?
It, there is a monetary component, yes.
What is that? Do we know what that amount is?
Um, a hundred and ten, fifty-six thousand dollars.
Okay. So, we'll need a, uh, roll call vote.
I would move the, uh, we haven't had a motion yet, have we?
No.
No.
I would move the BiTech One Solution Contract Amendment for a hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars for final action.
Support.
One fifty-six or fifty-six, Bill?
I'm sorry. No, the value of the contract itself is eighty-six thousand and thirty-three dollars. The whole project is expected to be one fifty-six.
So, we're asking for a motion not to exceed what amount?
You wanna go to the eighty-six, or you wanna go to the one fifty-six?
Well, eighty-six is what we will need to pay Sungard BiTech. The other portion of the funds is for hardware and third-party, um, software that, that IT will purchase directly, so...
Sounds like the total contract is one fifty-six.
The contract with the company is eighty-six.
Um, in the minutes to approve the contract for final action, along with the necessary requirements.
Okay. With voice vote?
So, so, it'll be, the contract for eighty-six now is a hundred and thirty-three dollars with additional expenses not to exceed one fifty-six.
Correct.
Excellent.
You have a second?
I second it then.
That's fine. We have a, uh, roll call, please.
Commissioner Heideman?
Yes.
Oh, wait, wait, Dave's got a question.
I could, because we do do this out of capital improvement. What's our balance? In the capital improvement fund?
We need it tomorrow, I don't know what happened.
Would you have the money there, though?
Yes, this, this project is going to be the public...
Any other questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Heideman?
Yes.
Commissioner Bohm?
Yes.
Commissioner London?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Gray Tap?
Yes.
Commissioner Samasco?
Yes. Item seven B, retirement hardship prescription copayment application, final action. We're all familiar with it pretty much, I think.
Uh, we've had this before.
Any questions or comments?
I, I would move the retirement hardship prescription copay application, uh, for final action.
Support.
Motion support. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item seven C, Resolution twelve dash forty-five, CBA Sheriff Office POAM three-twelve eligible, final action item. Bill, uh, you wanna say anything about that before we, uh... Bill, do you want to say anything about that before we...
This, this is the collective bargaining agreement between the county, the sheriff, and the road patrol deputies. We did discuss this in executive session. We brought you up to speed on the terms of the new agreement. There have been changes in the health care, the provisions that require the employee to contribute towards their health care costs. There were freezes in their wages, and there were adjustments made to some of the narrative or the text within the bargaining agreement that provides a little bit more flexibility for the sheriff when it comes to scheduling the employees.
Mr. Chairman, I would move the 312 bargaining agreement that we discussed for final action.
Now, is this a monetary component as well, Bill? No? Okay. I wouldn't think so.
I don't think so.
Do we have a second?
Support.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item seven D, Revision of Board of Commission Meeting Schedule Final Action. Pretty familiar with that as well, I'm sure. We've all looked at that.
Move for final action, we accept the Board of Commissioners' schedule as presented.
Support.
Second? The motion and second, any discussion?
Just a couple of comments, I guess, on it. As you know, we have something scheduled for November 15th, which is deer hunting, so we moved that up to the eighth. One other thing for your schedules, on, we got the actuarial report for any of the commissioners that have attended or haven't attended. It's pretty, you know, informative as far as where we're at and, you know, make some of our decisions with health care, those types of things, based off those numbers. That is on November 8th at 9:00 a.m., and that'll be in this building. I think they're going to do it up here. So I just want...
I, I do have a question regarding one of the meetings that's listed on your schedule, and that would be the November 19th, 2012 Legislative Lunch. In previous years, that particular legislative lunch was canceled. I'm wondering if the board has any thoughts on whether or not they want to hold that particular meeting, or if you want to cancel it at this point. It's entirely up to you.
I think probably cancel. I mean, it's right after the elections, tons of new faces, you know, all the above, so I would say.
We have a second? Motion and second, any discussion? Now, we're going to vote on canceling that one meeting out of the agenda before we pass it. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. You can strike that, Bill. And now, we will move to voting on the adoption of the amended schedule. Any further comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries as well. Item seven E, Year End 2013 Budget. Are we doing a budget this year, Bill?
Yes, we're doing a budget this year for 2013. We have not, we've had a few inquiries. Carrie, do you want to talk a little bit about some of the questions that have come your way, and really hasn't been very much?
Yeah, we want to do the budget meeting, hearing call, whatever you want, before board meeting on the eighth.
Public hearing you're talking about.
Public hearing piece of it, yeah. We haven't, it's a little different than what we've done, you know, in years past, so to speak, but I think Bill and Carrie have done a really good job working with the department heads, kind of gave them their marching orders early on, and I personally haven't heard from anybody. And so unless some of the commissioners have questions for Carrie and Bill, I know some of you have, they've been answered.
Do we need a motion, then, to send this full board for final action?
Yes.
I would make that motion.
I would support it.
Wait, what? What was the motion?
Just a motion to send the proposed budget presented by...
I have to, we've already received it.
Already done that?
You've just adopted it next week.
Okay, so this is on for, item is for what action?
Just for discussion.
Oh, for discussion, okay. Discussion only, Howard, so we'll do that.
Okay.
It's okay.
I'll, I'll live with that.
Any further discussion or comment? Hearing none?
Carrie had, I guess.
Carrie, do you want to say something?
No, I'm just here if there's any questions.